Rule call please.
Secretary Slater?
She's excused.
Mr. Sherkey?
Here.
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 Here. Approval or amendments to the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. We have appro- we have a motion to accept the agenda and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes?
September.
Yeah, what? Is this the one, September eighteenth meeting? Yes, I don't have that, any challenges? Right here.
Well, did you motion?
I can't.
Oh, no, I would.
No, I didn't.
Oh, I would make a motion to approve the minutes from September eighteen, two thousand nineteen.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion of support. All in favor to approve the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
And I have the new, the original preface, so I'll give this to you today. The Clay Township Zoning Board of Appeals, or ZBA, primarily addresses practical difficulty based on lot size, location, shape, or contour and/or location of existing buildings. We are guided by section twenty-seven point zero five of ordinance number one twenty-six. There are five members on the ZBA, all of whom are present. At least three members must vote affirmatively for your motion to grant a variance. Three members constitute a quorum. Each appeal before the ZBA will have a public hearing at which time the applicant will first present his or her case, and any public comment regarding that issue will follow. During this time, members of the board may ask questions of clarification. If a particular point gets belated, the chairperson has the right to limit comments. When the public hearing is closed, the board will move on to the deliberation of the particular variance request. If the applicant should disagree with the board's decision, he or she has the right to take it to circuit court within thirty days of the decision. When your appeal hearing is concluded, you're welcome to leave or stay as you wish. Okay, so we have new business. I'm gonna open up new business. We have ZBA appeal two thousand nineteen dash zero zero eight. I'm gonna open up the meeting, but I'm gonna excuse myself from this case. So Dennis, you. Can't you hear? Okay? There are letters that need to be read as well. Dennis, they're right here. Okay, here, here.
We can still stay here.
I can't stay in the building. Okay, and then, once you guys are done with the decision, or whatever happens, I'll be able to make sure. Okay? So then we'll just continue on the meeting.
Okay.
You wanna just text me?
I left my phone on the truck.
I'll just.
We'll just open, we'll open the side door and do that.
I got my coat, of course.
Alright, so again, as Brian just mentioned, we're start the ZBA appeal two thousand nineteen zero zero eight sixty-four oh, sixty-four oh three Dyke Road. Who is that?
Ronald Smith.
Wanna go up onto the podium there, sir? Introduce yourself, the address, and whatnot?
Yeah, I'm Ron Smith. I'm the property at sixty-four zero three Dyke Road and property out on the snob or the nine-five-six-fives. And, uh, that's who I am. Do you wanna read the letters that you have?
We will go into that, but why don't you tell us what's going on with the boathouse?
Okay, so I applied for this boathouse to be rebuilt because it's fallen down, and I know you have ordinances. Uh, got rejected, but at the time that I got rejected, I also had submitted to the DEQ to get the seawall rebuilt due to the high waters with the drawings of the new boathouse and everything, which they got approved. So, by the time they got approved, it would already gone over the thirty days elapsed that I could go to civil court on the situation. So, since I got the DVA to approve my boathouse and new seawall to be bigger and higher to accommodate for the waters, then I reapplied and got another answer back that now, well, the boathouse needs to be built without walls. So, I just feel like that I'm being discriminated against because I know you have ordinances and things in this township, but just after my further review, first of all, I have letters from both property owners right beside me on either side that agree that the building needs to be redone, so the appearance of the community will actually increase the property values. Do you, I guess you have these? Well, you don't have this one, because this is the neighbor to the east of me. He put that on my truck yesterday, so maybe you have that one too. And then, I guess you have one from Bob and Jim Pruce from across the channel.
Yep.
So, the way I look at it, nobody, nobody's disapproving of me redoing my building except for the township. So, I started investigating, and I found that, just in a matter of a few days, that I've got the same boathouse on the North Channel that was approved with the variance to rebuild this whole boathouse with walls, brand new, across from the ferry. No different than the one that I want to build. And then, also, on Harsons Island, I've got this boathouse that was completely tore down from the ground up and rebuilt, which is about a six hundred thousand dollar boathouse. And then, just right down the road from there, I find another boathouse that has living quarters on it that was approved, has a permit without a variance, which there's no living quarters allowed in your ordinances to have a boathouse. Then I go down a little bit further down the road, and then I see this one. The permit says on it, boathouse. It's a three million dollar boathouse with two forty-foot wells in it without a variance, with just a permit. Love that one. And also, Sartier here has a detached garage on the same lot. There's no house on this property at all. This permit was approved, and it has living quarters above the garage, which is against your ordinances. So, the way I look at it, I'm being discriminated against because since Brown, I guess he, over the years that he's been here, he decides who gets the permits and who don't. So, the way I look at it is, if my boathouse is not approved, then I wanna build that. I wanna build this miniature Sartell house on my lot and make it this smaller. Because if they can build these things because they're millionaires, then I wanna living quarters of my boathouse right where it is too.
Okay.
So, so Sartier's plays. The permits are for him to have a boathouse, and that is a boathouse permit. And a garage permit, both have living quarters of both. So, the township is granting all these, these permits and turning down a lot of people that should get the same, same option.
Right, I understand.
Well, you guys think that you can bury this one under each other, but I'm just gonna tell you, we're gonna, I'm gonna go to civil court, and I'm gonna pull ten years of permissions to see how many people was discriminated against by said Brown. Because he, he's the one that issued all these permits without variances. So, I don't know how you can do a three million dollar boathouse.
We don't have any control of what happens in the building department, so all we can do is here is to listen to your case this evening. Um, do you have anything else, though?
Yeah, I'd just like for my attorney to speak.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for the opportunity just to speak very briefly on behalf of us. Absolutely. My name's Michael Donley. I'm from the Fraser, Tribelcock, Davidson, Dunlap Law Firm in Detroit.
Say that again, please?
Yes, it's Michael Donley from Fraser, Tribelcock. It's a law firm in Detroit. Mr. Smith has retained my firm to take a look at this issue. Our initial review has indicated that we think, two things. First of all, we believe that his request has met all of the requirements under the ordinance in terms of what he needs to show. We obviously have what is essentially an act of God with the rising of the waters. It specifically impacts him individually as opposed to even some of the neighbors. It may impact some other people in the community in different ways, but in his particular circumstances, very individualized in the fact that his boathouse is previously built, is not big enough to get the boat in. But perhaps more importantly, from, from this board's position, you have what should be consistent rulings, and we think that based on some of the pictures he's shown you, it has not been consistently applied by either the building department or otherwise. But more importantly is what Mr. Smith is asking to do is not only now approved by all of his neighbors, but it will substantially increase the value of the property, not only his, but the surrounding property values. It's gonna be a build, if you've seen from the plans, it's gonna be proportionate to the, to the property. It's obviously gonna fix the condition, and I think that's why the neighbors ultimately have said, "We want to have this done because we think it's gonna impact our property value positively." So, I would encourage the board to take that into consideration, and particularly given the history, as, as Mr. Smith has indicated, that perhaps wasn't as consistent an approach to whether there are walls. Obviously, walls are important because of security for boats. If he's gonna store his boat there, if you don't have walls, it could be subject to damage and/or theft. So, we'd encourage you to do that. Mr. Smith has retained us to appeal this matter if necessary. We'd obviously don't think that's in anybody's interest to have to do that, so we encourage you to, to grant the variance as requested. Thank you very much.
Anybody with any other public comments? If you'd like to go ahead and close public comments? I do have a few letters here to, to read. Dear Mrs. Trappa, as an adjacent property owner to Mr. Ron Smith, I am writing you to express my support for Mrs. Smith's proposed plans to replace his existing seawall and boathouse, while I'm certainly understanding the existing zoning restrictions within the township.
Dennis, pull your mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not good at public speaking. It should be appreciated that Mr. Smith's situation property are somewhat unique. Accordingly, special consideration should be given to what is requested in approving upon structures that already exist. After discussion with Mr. Smith, I feel that his plans are not only reasonable, but are necessary in order to protect his property from the current high water conditions we are expecting, experiencing, excuse me. Further, it is my sincere belief that the township should support any resident who speaks or seeks to responsibly and reasonably improve their property as Mr. Smith hopes to. Chuck Hines. I have here a letter from Sam Suzanne Smith. We are writing you today in regards, in regard to variance requests submitted by the owner of sixty-four oh three Dyke Road. The current owner of the property purchased the property in October twenty-six, two thousand sixteen. It does not reside at this property. The property of sixty-four oh three is used for a parking lot and boat storage. The applicant knew the size of the boathouse when the property was purchased less than three years ago. The boathouse is in need of repair. They can repair, just like the other residents, repair their boathouses without tearing them down. They, we object to a variance of the property located at sixty-four oh three Dyke Road. Sam and Suzanne Smith.
Which they're, they're not.
Just. Mr. Trappa, Chairman, we are in favor of zoning ordinance one twenty-six for the enlargement of the boathouse. We have seen several large boathouses in Clay Township and Harsons Island on vacant lots, which look very nice. We look forward for the improvement in our neighborhood, Mr. and Mrs. Press, or Prus, excuse me, sixty-four ten Marine Drive. That's all I have for letters.
But the letter that he gave you was not received, was it? He just handed.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we don't have copies of that letter. You just sent it one time.
And around, if you wanna see it.
Well, yeah, after.
We'll go this way first, just to verify what I read. Okay. It's okay if we keep that, right?
Oh, yeah.
You wanted, you said you wanted to take a picture of it?
Yes, ma'am.
And then give it to her? Yep.
Okay, so, uh, anybody like to start some discussion here?
Are these the same plans that you submitted the last time?
Yes, ma'am.
Exactly the same?
And the DEQ.
Is the DEQ part new? Did you submit the, it last time?
The DEQ has the same drawings as you, they just have also the seawall drawings.
Okay. So, the part that your application that's revised is the DEQ permit?
Correct. I just used their permit to resubmit.
Now, it looks like part of this is on land as well? Part of the boathouse?
It's all on that.
No, I mean, um, well, it looks like there's, uh...
The boathouse is over a well, and I'm wanting to expand my well wider and eight foot wider, ten foot deeper.
So, some of it will be on the land? Covering land, you like a little walkway or whatever on it, or, I mean, I'm just looking at this.
The lot, the lot is, is a hundred and ten foot, about fifty. And then, in the bottom corner, the southeast corner, is the boathouse existing. So, the seawall on the east side to the property line on the east side, that seawall would remain. We would just come back ten foot and put the sea, ten foot, ten foot towards the road, which is nothing on that side of the road, it's marshland. And then, the seawall would just come out eight foot wider back to the, to the channel. So, basically, it's the same thing, other than just going a little wide. I've been on the lake since two thousand and eight, and I own the house at nine-five-six-five nine world since two thousand and fourteen. So, I've, I've been on the lake for a long time. I had, I had a slip at Belmont when I bought the house, and coming back across that bay, it, it just beats you to death. So, I found the property here, I didn't know anything about it. There's no parking on there. We come there, we park our car, and we get on the boat, we leave. We come back, and we, and we take off. So, we're, you know, we're not storing anything. There's no boat stories there. The only issue is I live two and a half hours from here, in Finley, Ohio. So, for me to get this boathouse built, the one that I have now from the waters, the seawall is dropped, and it's falling, falling into the channel. So, I sent pictures in with the first one, but you can see, and that's the DVA, it's all the same thing. So, the water is why the front of the boathouse is dropped, the channel part. So, I have to rebuild it either way. But every year, I take my boat and seadews out of the water. My seadews stay at the lake house on the cottage on the island all year long on seadoo docks. But every year, I have to haul the boat and seadews back to Ohio because I don't want to sit there and winterize them and put them in the lot, because then it would be a parking lot. So, I, I don't. I take them back to Ohio, so I don't have the issue of storing anything on the property. I got permits for, for everything there in the beginning, so... The thing that is, is if I can go deeper and wider with my boathouse, then I can put a lift in there and pick my boat out of the water, and I don't even have to haul it anymore. And that's one reason I don't want open sidewalks, is because if I'm gonna be gone all winter, anybody could just go in there and pick anything they want out of my boat. I want it to be stored and locked up and get out of the weather. And that's, just like now, I can put my boat in there, but I can't lift it out of the water. So, and then I can put the seadews on the side. So, therefore, I wouldn't need even a trailer or anything on the lot ever again, because I, you know, this is my home, the lake. I've been here. I'm not leaving. I love it out here. So, you know, that's why I didn't think it was, it was a bad request. Tom, my neighbor, he, he rejected it the first time. But after we sat and talked, you know, it does increase his property value to have a new building. And it's not astronomically any bigger than it is. It's only eight foot wider and ten foot deeper. It's not, I mean, it's, once it's built, you would never know the difference, other than it'd be nice and look new.
Alright, well, thank you. If we have any further questions, we'll ask there. What do you have here? How does it, where, where did I read it? It says it's not conforming.
It's an existing boathouse, it's a non-conforming accessory structure on a vacant lot. It's right, it's right. It's right here on the appeal. A non-conforming structure shall not be enlarged or altered in any way which increases its nonconformity. That's, that's our ordinance.
And I understand where you're, with everything getting, that you've given us this, this evening, and your point, and we understand it crystal clear. But, uh, I would just like to, to just point to just a couple key words here. The existing boathouse is a non-conforming accessory structure on a vacant lot. And what that actually means is that there's a boathouse or a structure on a lot without a house. And if they had a house on it, it would not be a non-conforming lot. So, that would, that would be how these examples that you gave us are all, how it all got away with. Or approved, or however you wanna say it.
Basically, Dennis, excuse me, we don't concern ourselves.
No, I understand. No, no, but I'm just, was just pointing to him, or telling him reasons, or those never came in front of us, so, because there's a home, it's not a non-conforming lot. So, I, I can't say anymore myself. I may have to have.
The permit says a boathouse. It's not a home.
I understand, but.
So, that's discrimination. Not by, not by you all, but by the, the Clay Township permit.
Well, we are only abided by, we have to follow the, we took an oath to follow these rules.
But you didn't then.
Well, that wasn't us, so.
No, because your ordinance goes through the permit before it comes to appeals.
We just abide by them. It's not, we all.
But they didn't.
This is the whole process. You come to us, we reject it, you have the right to do further, take it down the line. But I can't make a motion or, or anything here, so someone has to suggest or give us some way to roll on this.
I understand that this, this, this means.
We're, we're in deliberation, right, in discussion.
Delivering, sorry.
According to our ordinance, it's a non-conforming accessory structure, and it can't be enlarged or altered in any way in its nonconformity. So, therefore, I make the motion that we deny it because of, it would be in violation of the ordinance. Because there's no house on it. It's nonconforming.
I'll second that. And may I add, um, to the drawing, it goes against Article three, section three oh one, part eight D, where all sides are supposed to be open as well.
Can I have a question? You'll have, we're still, um, any further discussion? Do you have anything? Ready to take a vote? Alright, Joy made a motion to deny. Sadie here is seconded. How do you vote? Oh, roll call.
Secretary Slater absent. Sherkey?
Yes, motion to deny.
No?
Yes, motion to deny.
Addie?
Yes.
Uh, yes. The motion, or the variance requested for sixty-four oh three Dyke Road has been denied due to, again, that, and the whole key word is a non-conforming accessory structure on a vacant lot. And that's why we have, I know that's, I understand everything that you're gonna do and say in the following, but this is what we have to follow. I mean, we took an oath and we ourselves would, uh, be in jeopardy.
So, how did the guy get the variance there, or did he build the same building?
I don't recall of any variances of any of these buildings, so, but.
That is something that we don't have anything to say about. We didn't.
I don't, there's not, I don't, I mean, I've been on here for.
The variance board approved that building just, just within two years ago. It's right outside the fair.
I've been here, what, seven years? I don't recall any of that, so.
Not the variance board, some other board, the plant, the building department.
There's other boards.
That's my point, is, is, they're getting, then these permits are being given away, and your ordinances aren't being followed. And you don't know that because they don't come to the board, but that's, that's discriminating against certain people. I mean, and just, just like the, the sidebar thing. I mean, these, these ordinances have been written for, what, fifteen, twenty years? This modern day world is a voting, this is a voting community. This sidebar thing, it's ridiculous. If a boat's in there, you can't see through it anyway. And another thing is, is you just change your ordinance, that, that the side view of your property owner, the, your neighbor, they can't say anything anymore, so you can put a six-foot fence up there. So, only, they're only allowed straight out the back door to the channel.
We understand.
So, why is it?
We have, we've, we completely understand, we.
That's fine. We'll just follow in civil court.
It's, it's not us, we.
Yes, I mean, we just have to follow what's given to us in.
Right.
You know, again, if there were other circumstances involved, it, that, it maybe would have played out differently, but unfortunately, and again, the key thing is.
Why are you discriminating against a property without a house? Because I asked a new zone.
It's just a non, it's a non-conforming structure.
Okay, but I asked the building inspector if I could build a house on top of it, just like that, and he told me no, it had to be offset. So, it's, so it's one's good for one and one's not for that. And I know this is recorded, and I want it to be recorded, because those houses I showed you are boathouses that these people live in. So, I requested that, okay, I don't want those, I don't want this boathouse. I'll build a house on top of it. But I got rejected with that too.
Unfortunately, I don't have any knowledge of any of these.
You don't know Sartier's house? You never saw it?
Oh, I know all about it, but it hasn't been in front of us. So, we have made those decisions or any claim that's on anything.
Right, so my, my complaint is not with you.
Right, we understand. We understand your frustration. You have your thirty days to file for an appeal.
Yes.
And...
And I have to wait until you put it in?
Tomorrow morning, you can go over there tomorrow and get the paperwork.
So we can file tomorrow?
Yes, sir. Just to wait, I've...
That's it?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Did everybody read this article from our, in the letter from our...
That's why I asked him that question. What's different besides the permits? And then on the permit page, it clearly says on there... Each one of you can use this.
Yep.
Thanks, Brian.
I hear they're fricking dangerous. Put, uh, save all your papers.
Those pictures, they have to go on the file.
Here's a copy of it.
Save all our papers?
Was this one of the pictures you gave me?
They're all the same.
They're all the same?
Yeah. So, there's just the four, yeah.
Wait a minute. Four?
Yeah.
One, two, three, four, five. There's five of them.
Five?
Yep.
And some of these are, I suppose, they're site planned. You know, that's why he thinks people work here, they don't necessarily need that.
No, that's...
That's, yeah, I know, that's much of my shit. That's come froggy.
Are there houses on those properties?
It's site planned. In the middle, you know, much of the property is site planned. This is private. This, this is the same. This is the new. It's a big island property. It's developed it.
I read it, Mom.
So this is the boathouse.
He brought a letter in.
And it's on the site. She's... Get your house site planned. It's a building, the house, but you didn't put it on there. It's the same difference.
Right.
Yeah, you can do with everything if you have your house.
Or at least the site plan for the house.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
I remember that.
They were talking about it too.
Because we ended up not voting on it. We gave them the opportunity to go with the building department and read.
Yes.
Which obviously you must have. Because it's a... We didn't go back here, so...
Yeah.
The non, non, the records, like what it said. That's the key, using why we can't do anything. The boathouse is a nonconforming structure. Fake it out. That's the key, fake it out. As a house, it's a scene.
Township to fight now?
Yeah.
All good? Okay. So the next unfinished business that we have is going to be ZBAPO two thousand nineteen dash zero zero six. We have a letter that he wants to postpone it. This time, we're not gonna put a date on it. We'll let him get, you know, and tell us what meeting he's gonna jump aboard.
We're just postponing it, not tabling it.
Yeah, we're not tabling, we're, you know, he's, he's not ready for us. So we're just gonna, instead of, you know, we, we put today's date on it and he's not ready, so we'll just let him go with that. Okay?
Do we need a motion for the postponement, or is it just an agreement?
We have to read that letter.
Based on the letter here.
It's on the letter.
Okay. I'm just asking.
I mean, we, we could. Are you guys all in favor of postponing this?
Sure.
Yeah, the property owner would like an additional time to reconfigure his request.
Oh, yeah, this isn't from him, anything else, so that's fine. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
You may want a motion because it was a written motion.
I can't do motions, so...
I, I make a motion that we go ahead and postpone till the homeowner is prepared to come over us and he picks a date.
And I'll second it.
Perfect. We have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, report from planning commission.
Uh, let's see. The last meeting, we had a, we granted a special land use extension to the owner of Danny's Liquor. A year ago, he applied for the special approval land use to bring in gas docks and essentially put a gas station in there. And based on the fact that he hasn't started any construction whatsoever, the one-year timeline come up. So he came before us and...
Where's this at?
Danny's Liquor.
This one.
Not Uptown, Danny's Liquor down...
He has dockage?
No.
No, no, gas, gas, gas dock, gas station.
Oh, gas station?
Gas docks, gas station.
How's he getting here by boat?
Fifty-one oh eight point treble. So anyhow, we granted the, the extension to give him some time. Um, you know, like, according to him, money is an issue, getting funding. He ran into some unexpected hurdles. The second biggie on our agenda was obviously everybody's favorite subject, Blue Horseshoe or Lipinski Island, which is being postponed or to be continued. Again, the public hearing is still open because they didn't have the proper, proper paperwork in time for us to rehear.
On the second meeting? They didn't have it ready again?
This is like the fifth time they haven't had it ready yet, yeah.
Well, they're going crazy in that seawall.
They're going with the seawall in there.
My understanding, and this is just hearsay, is that they do have the approvals from the DEQ for the seawalls, which has nothing to do with us. That's just, you know, recovery of land, right of recovery. That, that has no bearing on our, the planning commission's ruling. The planning commission's ruling is for his event venues. You know, with the parking and the traffic studies that we're requesting, both vehicular and boat traffic studies we're requesting. And we've given him, you know, he has, obviously has the deadlines to get the paperwork in for us to review before the meeting, and he's missed the deadline, you know, three months in a row or four months in a row now, I think. I haven't heard whether he's made the deadline for this meeting, so only time will tell. That's it.
He's taking a lot of money in that seawall.
I know. Yes.
They're going busy, yeah.
All right, well, thank you. All right, any other matters to review by ZBA? I have one. Yeah, anyone from you guys?
I don't have anything as a board member, just that Artie's working with, trying to get some documentation from the governor for, so that they can, the county can get some monies or get, get ready for the next big storm that's gonna come down the road. And he's trying to make some headway. He had a joint conference, phone conference with her and his, her staff. And he just keeps working real hard on that because we're gonna probably get hit again, you know, because the water now is seven inches higher than it was last year at this time. It's gonna go up seven more inches at least, so...
Well, my, uh...
Want to be proactive instead of reactive.
One of my buddies, his sister is the core engineer working on a project of the seawalls. And over this past weekend, they had an awesome family thing. They just redid the seawall around the Doty. And they're, however it came up, she's like, basically can't recount to it saying that they're having such issues with, with the repairs, that they're gonna release enormous amount of water come April. And she says that that prediction of that six to eight is gonna be to twenty-four inches.
Yeah, way up, possibly, yeah.
If we go six inches higher than what we had at our peak, we're gonna be in...
We're all gonna be underwater, yeah.
That's why they tried to slow that. When they, one guy said they were gonna have all that, you know, high waters, and it did go up. If we get twenty-four inches, we're gonna be...
Oh, I know.
I'm sorry, that's...
It'll be like, in the south or in the east and all the places, hurricane type stuff.
Yeah, because, I mean, it's still high. Even though it went down, it's still high as of today.
And that crazy wind. You already see how it's already, the water's dropped and it's just pushing up. I can only imagine what's gonna be happening in Marine City tonight, you know? That would be crazy.
Like I, like I say, I've had conversation with Artie the other day, and he's working really hard on trying to get something from the governor, you know, to prepare, be able to get some information and get help from the DEQ, the Corps of Engineers. And they can't do anything unless the governor signs an emergency declaration that this is okay. So that's what he's working on. So it's not that he's, that the township's not trying, the county, there's a letter from the county too that he, they sent.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to, if you want to do on that award of, uh, trying to figure out that rest of...
No, no, I tell people. I don't know. Everyone gets that email from Cindy?
Yes.
All right, from now on, it's, we're not gonna respond on it. No communication, besides if we're not gonna be there. That letter that came out should not have came out before the meeting.
Wait a minute, what letter?
What letter?
If you read the email, it's in there. So the letter that was read tonight should not have come out before this meeting. So it made me very upset.
The letter that was read, what, what?
The letter from the lawyer that Artie did today.
I didn't read it.
We didn't read it? We, I mean, we didn't read it?
I didn't read it. Perfect. If it wasn't read, no, but, okay. So what I'm getting at, you guys, I do not want you guys, us, as a team, to be skewed in any way, shape, or form before this meeting comes in. That's why we can't talk to each other. That's why, you know, I don't communicate, you know what I mean? You can call me or text me that you're not gonna be here, but as far as, we know not to discuss meetings. And that's why, that, when that letter came out, I don't want you guys to come in with a notion, well, I got an, you know, anything to do with, you know, an excuse or a voting in any way, shape, or form, because that's not fair to all of us, you know? And I, and I just don't work like that, you know? So, the email, I'm gonna tell Cindy this tomorrow. The email is for information about the meeting. Your packets are ready. Who's gonna be here, who's not gonna be here? Do or don't respond to it because it's, we really can't communicate in that kind of forum.
Right.
Right? Y'all agree?
Yeah, yeah.
And I didn't, you know, I'm glad no one responded to it. Obviously, you didn't read the letters, fine, but regardless, it's...
I just didn't know which one you were speaking of.
Yeah, just the one, you know?
Yeah.
It shouldn't have, how it was presented should not have happened that way. And I'm going on public saying that that should not happen. And I will talk to Artie about that tomorrow. Not in my meetings. You know, I have no power. I have no power, but I do in this. I'm not, you know, unfair. I'm not, because, well, one, I knew, you know, half of this was, you know, I couldn't see or hear any of it, which is fine. You know, the guy wants me to build a boathouse. So once he says that, I can't hear the meetings, you know? And Artie knows that, too. Not blaming Artie. All I'm saying is, from now on, it's that email that Cindy says is for information, but nothing to do with cases. I'm gonna tell her, I don't want any, anything that does with the case should be in our packet prior to, or on our table like it is tonight. Okay? All right. And that's, you know, when you read the email, you'll see where I was kinda upset because I don't wanna be, you know, and I can go on record, this isn't the last that you're gonna see of this guy, you know what I mean?
Right.
I'm sorry that, you know, but in the, in the same token, you know, regardless, and I don't even know what was said, obviously, so we'll, we'll see. And hopefully, I don't ever have to see it, but...
Made the motion on the basis of the ordinance.
Yeah, so, yeah, well, that's why, you know, that's why I'm not here to show you, you know, my face. It's, you know, I don't want, you know, you know, it's just work to me, is all it is. And unfortunately, I'm not chairman to it, you know? So I had to step down. All in that. Anything else, guys?
Motion to adjourn.
Nope, not yet. Public comments? Close public comments, now you can.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah.